All right, we're going to get back to business here. Next case is mandatory referral. It's 2023-0120. And it's located in the 7,500 block of Overcup Oak Trail. And it's for right-of-way abandonment. Has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Oh, in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next case is 2023-0121. It's located at 5431 Hickson Pike. And it's an application to lift conditions from ordinance 9135. And its lifting conditions, staff is recommending approval on lifting conditions two and four and amending condition number one. Is there any opposition present? All right, and is the applicant present? All right. Okay, so are we talking about the same property, 5431 Hickson Pike? That's the one where you have some opposition to the lifting of the conditions?
I would say she's referring to the rezoning case, but maybe they're all three tied together.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so we'll, ma'am. Thank you. We get paid zero. Well, some of us actually get paid for here. Most of us don't. Yeah, get a new job. Yeah. All right, Mr. Schultz.
Sure.
If we could, since we have 2023-0121, 0122, and 0123, all right there together. Can you just give us the staff report on all three of those? And then we'll take action on them separately.
Yeah, 2023-121, this is to lift conditions number one through, one through four of ordinance number 9135. You see on the zoning map, it was zone C2 with four conditions, the proposed use of the new, as far as rezoning, will be multi-unit residential. The four conditions are the use of the property for outdoor storage of plants, shrubs, and greenhouses only. Access to be through existing C2-zoned area only. This C2 off Strickland Avenue doesn't really front a public street. So it's accessed off of Skillern Road, which is the C2 to the south. The areas reserved for utilities must be kept free and clear of all structures. And finally, condition number four. All other existing easements are to be retained. So the applicant's asking that all four conditions be lifted. Here's the view of the site now, what it is currently today. It has a budding, single-unit residential, a medical office, and commercial to the south. You can see on the screen, this property really doesn't front Skillern Road. It's tied to another property to the south, which does front. There's a view of the site from Hickson Pike. Site from Skillern Road. The view, the view north of the site. And this is the view south of the site. East of the site. This is west of the site. This is in the Hickson North River Area Plan, adopted in 2004, which recommends medium business mix, which is typically C2 convenience, commercial, neighborhood, commercial, office, residential, or similar uses. Closer view of what that place type recommendation is. The request to lift conditions two through four is compatible to Hickson North River Plan. It is compatible surrounding land use and development reform. Staff recommends to lift conditions two through four, but amend condition number one. So that new condition would be the following: drive-throughs, warehousing, wholesaling, auto-oriented uses. Hospitals and adult-oriented establishments shall be prohibited. So again, staff recommends to amend condition number one to that language that I just read, and amend, or sorry, lift conditions two through four. Next case is 2023-122, which is the rezoning of some adjacent property. Does not include the one we just talked about on the conditions, but this is a budding property. This is a request to rezone this property from R2 to R3 for multi-unit residential. The number of acres involved in this request is 7.6. Proposed number of units is 132 units. That's a density of 17.3. Looking at the zoning map, to the north of this property, it's R2 and R1. To the south, along Hickson Pike is C2. And to the east, sort of budding Skillern Drive is C2 and R4. And to the west is R2. You go further west towards the rural tract, you have C2 as that location. There's no recent zoning issue on this particular piece of property, but there is on the one we just talked about on lifting the conditions, which is C2. Here's aerial view of the sites being rezoned. You can see it's single-family dwellings on the property. You have single unit to the north. To the east is a medical office, commercial establishments, and to the south is commercial. This property is located in a 100-year flood hazard area, or flood plain, which is the lighter blue color. This is the view of the site, the rezoning. I'll go through these really quickly. Your Strickland Circle. Old Hickson Pike, the site's on the right-hand side. This is west of the site. This rezoning is in the Hickson North River Plan, which again was adopted in 2004. The plan recommendations for this particular piece of property is medium and low-density residential. Low-density residential being primarily single-unit detached dwellings. Some exceptions made for townhomes and patio homes if the density is compatible. The medium density does recommend patio homes and townhomes and single-unit dwellings. Here's a closer view of that property. You can see it has a split zoning designation, or zoning, but plan recommendation, which is medium-density residential or low-density residential. Staff recommended to deny the rezoning request. It is not compatible with Hickson North River Plan and surrounding land uses. R2 existing zoning does meet the plan goals for low-density and medium-density residential. The R2 zone will allow approximately 44 single-unit lots, or 34 duplex lots, or 69 two-unit townhouses, townhouses, which aligns with the plan goals. So again, the existing zoning is more compatible with the plan goals and existing development form of the area. So staff recommended to deny the rezoning request. There's a site plan that was submitted with the request. Finally, the last request is to abandon the right-of-way of Strickland Circle. This right-of-way does not connect to Strickland or Skillern Drive. In the day, staff recommended to approve this closure of abandonment of this right-of-way. So staff, on the first cases, recommend to amend condition number one, approve conditions two through four, deny the rezoning, and approve the closure of this right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right.
The plan use was 2004?
Uh, yes, so it's quite old.
Yeah, it's 20 years old. There's a lot of development in that area. Is that plan going to get updated soon?
Yes, it will be this year.
All right, so we're going to take action on 2023-0122 first, Mr. Price. And staff, and then we'll address 121 and 123. All right.
So one, the first case is regarding the change as it relates to the four conditions. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, we're not rezoning. We're going to, we're going to take the rezoning case first, because if, if we're going to deny that, then the other two are somewhat less relevant. And maybe we can move through them a little bit quicker.
Okay.
Or vice versa.
Thank you. So we do have a plan that we have put together, which shows 132 units on this property. The access is located off of Skillern Drive, within 100 feet of Hickson Pike. That is our only access. It would be in and out of this development, as we did not see that it was appropriate to come in off of Old Hickson Pike, further back into areas that would be more residential in nature. This area has been the Green Thumb Nursery for a number of years, at least a portion of it. And then, given the proposed use that we see in through here, and a plan that's some 19 years old, we think that this is an appropriate use, especially given the landscape that we would be providing, as well as dealing with Skillern Circle, and providing a turnaround access in through here. So I do have proposed four conditions, which we think are appropriate. So one of the things in the landscape ordinance is that all it is required along Old Hickson Pike is an eight-foot street yard. So what we would see is actually is appropriate is to put a 10-foot Type-C buffer along the right-of-way there of Old Hickson Pike as well. There is also the property that is on the opposite side of Old Hickson Pike. It is part of the request, but we could certainly see that being left in its current zone of R1, or R2, that is. We don't see that that's going to be used as it relates to any sort of development patterns. Most of that area and through there, as it relates to Old Hickson Pike, that area isn't a floodway. So we purposely left the community space there in the front thereof, along Old Hickson Pike. And we see that is, even though it is in a floodway, we can utilize that space as community space for residents. We do have a clubhouse and a pool. And we think that, again, given that we have commercial, we have office, you've got duplex zoning in through here, that this actually is an appropriate use, based upon the fact that the plan is some 19 years old, and it doesn't really take into account development patterns as far as what we see today. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Price before we hear from the opposition?
We're all curious about, we'll have that opportunity in just a second. The driveway out to Skillern. Can you walk me through that? That looks like a very difficult turning movement. And I understand what you're going for, coming, not wanting to come off Old Hickson Pike, but can you just walk through the pros and cons?
So the, that is the current access that has been utilized by the Green Thumb Nursery for, since I guess they've been in operation. Basically, from the face of the curve to the face of the curve of Hickson Pike, it's some 100 feet in through there. We would see majority of turning movements in the AM would be left turn movements, excuse me, right turn out, and then probably another right turn heading towards the city. So that should put very little pressures in the AM. The PM is where you will have left turn movements, as we see from Hickson Pike on to Skillern. But then again, they should be able to make that immediate left and go right into the development. So we think we're on the right side, so to speak, in regards to where the, the access is coming in. Versus if the driveway were on the other side, we would see far more conflicts in both the AM and PM. So it's one of those where we're fortunate, I guess, to be on the correct location side, as far as where all the turning movements would be coming in and out.
And how many units is this again?
132.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Mike, I, could you explain the, you've got a little turnaround, it looks like, not even a hemorrhage, a turnaround in the back.
So Skillern Circle, which we went through quite a number of different iterations with CDOT to figure out, is it a private or is it a public? We're still not 100% certain, but we think that it is public. And so, but it currently comes through the site, but dead ends. So what we looked at providing would be is, Skillern currently comes in their circle. You would come and run basically parallel with the bottom of the screen, and you would be able to turn up in there. Then you would be able to back out to your right, or to the passenger side, and then go through there. So it's sort of like a semi sort of hammerhead or L-shaped in through there. So the, the ability to have more turning movement where it's wider, but then backing out into like a 12-foot wide lane to be able to then line up to be able to exit. So we actually played with it, and you can make emergency vehicles make that turn.
So, so that road, though, you're saying that goes to the Old Hickson Pike?
No, it actually just dead ends in the property. It does not continue out to Skillern Drive. It is currently, as it shones through there, Strickland Circle ends before it gets to the end of our site.
So who has the traffic get to this?
Currently, it's being used to the neighbors to the sort of south of us, I guess, if I've got my directions, or to the east, or excuse me. Yeah, to the west of us. So it's used by those residents today. It's really not, again, a cut through. So we would actually be eliminating a couple of different individuals that might use that road otherwise. So there'd be less traffic on this as a result. We don't intend to utilize it at all.
So, but right now, the traffic is coming from Skillern or from the other direction.
Currently, the traffic utilizing that comes in off of Old Hickson Pike. And that's their only access to utilize Skillern Circle is Old Hickson Pike.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Stormwater, which direction are you anticipating this will be going? Is it going to be split, or is it going to be in one direction?
I'm anticipating that the stormwater will basically go towards the pond that you see to the, to the south of us. And then, from there, it will be metered out. What, what I see is that we'll basically be having an underground detention system.
Do you anticipate any crossings crossing Hickson Pike?
No.
For stormwater?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Price. We'll hear from those of you that are here in opposition, or have some question or concern. Now's the time to speak.
Thank you. Yes, I am Susan Crowell. My address is 916 Rosemary Court in Soddy Daisy. I actually am here representing the North Chickamauga Creek Conservancy. And we actually own the parcel on the north side of the development to the left. And then we are pending owners of the parcel to the right of their parcel, extending all the way down to the part where Old Hickson Pike intersects and takes the left turn and crosses the bridge. So our concerns really are for the watershed and the creek. Our first concern is the parcel that is up against the creek, that is between the two parcels that we have interest in, should in no way have an increase in density in its zoning. It is not necessary, even with how the developer has this currently planned for a change of zoning for that particular parcel. So we adamantly would oppose that zoning change. One of the land, I know you go by land uses in terms of the zoning, but in terms of natural resources, the North Chickamauga Creek is a prominent feature of this area. And in that 2004 and '05 adopted plan, the, one of the priority goals that came out of that plan for the Hickson area was preservation of watershed for the North Chickamauga Creek. So I don't think that changes. Once we lose that, we can't get that back. That priority shouldn't change. The creek is always going to be a prominent feature and a prominent challenge of the area. But we ask for that consideration, is that parcel should not be zoning changed. We also have concerns about the loss of pervious watershed that this development will cause. So in that nature, we have concerns about the zoning change for that as well. We have a little bit of concern about the drainage towards the creek. We do appreciate that the planner has included some open space in the flood zone and not touching that parcel directly on the creek. But we do have some concerns about drainage towards the creek from this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
5416 Old Hickson Pike, and I own the house across the street from that, which is 5411. I have 13 and a half acres back to, up to the creek. If you'll see the darkened area there, that's his property. And if you'll look, there are homes.
Ma'am, can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jane Griffith.
Thank you.
And I live at 5411 Old Hickson Pike. That's where the Circle driveway is. If you'll see on Strickland Court there, there are several houses behind Mr. Spangler's residence. And if they close that off, how are they going to get out? Is a concern. My home and his home, I'm told, are the oldest houses in Hickson. And I don't think the road's been expanded much since they built up in 1900. So I, I don't think he's going to be able to accept all the traffic, these units who are going to put on it. And on Skillern Drive, this gentleman here has lived there since he was born. And that street's about a block and a half long. So if you put 1,000 cars a day on that street, it's going to be over-usage. And in addition to that, turning from Hickson Pike onto that street, there have been about four fatalities in the last 10 years in front of what was the old Hardee's there. So turning left off of Hickson Pike is a danger. Thank you.
My name's Carl Vickers. I live at 5423 Old Hickson Pike, the property due north of Pro site. Me and my wife have spent the last 20 years renovating this house and kind of turning our house into our dreams. Right on the creek, just a gorgeous area. The existing fields there, deer come, they're grazed all the time, and fishing bears fantastic. And right around the curve right there, where they're talking about, you know, saying they're going to flow away from it. The curb area floods if there ever, you know, any big rain. And their proposed, you know, plan, the entire distance of my road frontage, well, I'll be looking at the back of a three-story apartment building, less than 100 yards from my backyard. I'm sorry, 100 feet from my backyard.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Skiller, and I live right there where the, adjacent to where the entrance to this project would be. And there's a business across the street from me on Skillern Drive. And on the same side of my street, on the lower end, is another business. And Skillern Drive is a very business road, and it's a cut through. If something happens on Hickson Pike, it's a detour. Normally, it's very busy, and both intersections are bad. Either at Old Hickson Pike or Hickson Pike. Because you've got the nursing home on Old Hickson Pike, you've got Hickson Schools. And then on Hickson Pike, you've got traffic going three different ways. And that plus the environmental impact it would have. But really, I don't think there's any way you could do anything about the traffic. So if you want, you know, create dangerous situations, you'd be doing that. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Price?
Thank you. So let me first say that the property that is there adjacent to the creek next to the conservancy, we would be interested in either donating or selling that, as we have no interest to develop that. So I think that hopefully would take care of Miss Crowell's concerns on that. As it relates to Strickland Circle, the discussion centered their own increased traffic. And again, we will be reducing traffic, not increasing it, because we are taking out several residents that currently use Strickland Circle. And we do not plan to access that alley in any shape, form, or fashion. As it relates to Mr. Vickers and Old Hickson Pike, that is the reason that we propose to go with a 10-foot Type-C landscape buffer along Old Hickson Pike versus just planting a tree every 25 or 35 feet. We think that planting evergreens in through there would help in terms of what his view shed would be as he would look out as it relates to this development in relation to his home. So I think with, with those changes that we have proposed with our zoning condition, and then addressing the concerns that are raised, I think that hopefully, again, with the 19, 20-year-old plan that I think is out of date, we would all agree. And given the changes that have occurred since 2004, that this is an appropriate use for this particular location. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike, following up from the question earlier, and I'm a little bit familiar with this area. But a long time ago, but the, is there a, the Strickland Circle, does it actually go through that property? Almost the sheet that, that they just gave us to look at. I think it goes right through the property line there. I don't think the right-of-way actually goes through there.
It, it, it comes into the property, and then it becomes this sort of unclear, because there are several different tracks into there. So we're not sure if it's private or public as it relates to that. I just know it doesn't connect to Skillern. And it's been a dead end for a number of years. So what we're asking to do is to close everything on our property, and then create a turnaround that currently really doesn't exist there today.
Well, I was getting back to the concern, I think, that, that they're having earlier on that.
I think what it shows currently is that Strickland Circle, if you look at the site plan, it shows that the right-of-way runs basically east-west. But the access, as it relates to coming out of Old Hickson Pike, it must be by an easement. Because we can't find any right-of-way there, but we do find the right-of-way that runs east-west. So we simply want to close that portion on our property that runs east-west, and then create currently what doesn't exist, and a turnaround for, for that area as it relates to, to where, where we're showing it now.
I'm, I'm good with the zoning. I'm a little hesitant to close Strickland at this point.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I did, would just, if I might, Mr. Matthew, I was told that there is actually an easement that exists through the property to the west of us that provides access to Strickland. A private easement, apparently. Yes, ma'am. Apparently, there is an easement that exists there today that people are utilizing. There would be less traffic, and we would not be using that road.
Sir, sir, sorry. We, we asked the questions, so, sorry. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, so in regards to the rezoning request, which is 2023-0122. I do have one question. You're, you're currently trying to rezone all the property, but it looks like maybe it's being bought, right? Including the parcel on the other side of Old Hickson Pike?
Which we could, if, if it, again, creates any heartburn, property that is on the north side of Old Hickson Pike could be left in its current zone. Because, again, we don't plan to have any use for that land.
So if you, if you're not going to do anything with it, maybe just pull that back out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a question for staff in that regard. Is there a zone that is set aside for conservation? Is there, is there any kind of park zone or anything like that?
No, there's not.
Mr. Chairman?
M1.
True, that's true.
You can't build houses on that, that's true.
I'm prepared to make a motion if there's any further.
Any further questions?
Mr. Berg? I make a motion to approve with the following conditions, one through four, as submitted by Mr. Price. And then further conditions, number five, no development north of Old Hickson Pike, except for greenway uses. And number six, driveway location to be off Old Hickson Pike. I'm just not comfortable with that Skillern Drive driveway. It looks like a nightmare.
We have a motion to approve with conditions. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How do, how do we enforce condition number three?
Actually, condition number three, there's no need for that condition technically. It's in the zoning code. We already require lighting to be directed down and away from residential areas. Unless you just want to reinforce that issue, but it's already in the zoning code. The LDL would enforce that through site plans and cutoffs. And coded for dark sky compliant fixtures, but I mean.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
In regards to case two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two one. You're asking to, staff has recommended approving the lift conditions two through four and amend condition number one. Do you take any issue with that?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion to approve the staff recommendation that has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two three. Which is a mandatory referral for right of way abandonment at the fifty-one hundred block of Strickland Circle. Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Would, would it be appropriate to defer that?
What, what, what would happen in the next thirty days?
To, to find out for sure. What I'm thinking is there, while these houses may be landlocked unless we can show for sure there's an easement through Mr. Spangley.
It's a legitimate concern. Yeah, Mr. Berg.
Whether or not it's right of way. Doesn't make any, doesn't make any change to the situation that they're in at Strickland Circle because it, it doesn't connect through to Skilling.
But except that they have legally conforming lots right now, which is what I think Mr. Matthews is saying. That they do have legally conforming lots because they have frontage on right of way.
That cannot, to another right of way, we're not voting on closing their portion of the right of way. Their portion of Skilling, or I'm sorry. Their portion of the alleyway is not part of this conversation or application, correct?
That is correct.
So they will still have their frontage to the alleyway. And whether or not there is an easement through the adjoining property. Their situation doesn't change one way or the other based on this application.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant would have to agree to a thirty-day deferral. This is the tomorrow. We cannot defer mandatory referrals.
I'm sorry. Mike, I thought that this Strickland went all the way out to Old Hickson Pike on the east side as well on the west side.
Not with what we found.
So there's, there's, there's an old gravel run up and it's parallel to Skilling. Between some fences there. And then it makes a right-hand turn, doesn't it?
I am more than happy to defer for thirty days if, if we need to do that in order to, you know, research and figure this out better. I, I think that we are correct in what we are stating, but I certainly understand if we need to sort of hold it back for thirty days to come back before this body and, and address those questions.
So you want to ask for a deferral?
I'll ask for a thirty-day deferral then.
We need a motion. We have a motion to defer for six, thirty days and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Just for those of you who are here and are curious, we are going to hear a portion of this next month here at Planning Commission, but only in reference to the right of way abandonment. So we took action today on case two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two one and zero one two two. Those will be moving on to city council. But next month we'll be hearing the right of way abandonment.
It goes to city council on September twelfth.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Item fourteen on our agenda. Two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two five. This is an application for an unaddressed property in the thirty-one hundred block, East Twenty-Six Street. And it's to rezone R one residential zone to UGC Urban General Commercial Zone. With conditions and staff has recommended to deny the applicant's request and approve R three residential zone with conditions. Is there any opposition present? And the applicant's present. And do you have any comments in regards to this staff recommendation? You do? Okay. Mr. Schultz, you go first.
Sure. This is a request for you to zone from R one residential zone to UGC for multi-unit residential. That's four point zero seven acres in size, proposing sixteen units. That's a density of three point nine three. Just looking at the zoning map, to the north is C two and R three. To the east is R two and to the west and south is R one. You see, there's no UGC in this general vicinity. This would be a real straight, a stretch of moving UGC in this location. Applicant did provide three conditions, residential uses only, max building high of three stories and max five dwelling units per acre. You can see again, there, there is no zoning history on this property. There is no UGC near this property. The closest, there was a case two thousand and five that rezoned Woodside Drive from R one to R two with conditions. But this general vicinity hasn't been any zoning cases. This is a vacant piece of property and just to the right is the tunnel going into East Ridge. So as you come out the tunnels in East Ridge, you're looking right at the property. To the south is two-unit residential as well as single-unit residential. To the east across West Side Drive is multi-unit residential. And to the west is multi-unit residential and single-family residential. There are slopes on this property. You can see the highlight on the screen here. There's very steep slopes in this property. Here's the site, East Twenty-Six Street. Site from Woodside Street. This is a view from West Side Drive into the site as you're coming out of the tunnels and roundabout, looking towards downtown. This is West Side Drive north of the site, looking back towards I twenty-four. This is south of the site. East of the site. This is west of the site, some of the multifamily. This is in the Russell Boulevard Community Plan, which was adopted in two thousand and four, which recommends low-density residential, which is typically detached, single-unit residential. It's a primary use. You see, here's the closer view of that location. It's just briefly, a little part of the property is in the plan. The request is not compatible with the Russell Boulevard Community Plan. It would not be compatible with surrounding land use and development reform. The UGC zone does prohibit a variety of commercial uses that would not be compatible with adopted plan or this general location. The UGC zone does allow five-story buildings and again, a variety of commercial uses. Approving the UGC at this location would set the precedent for introducing UGC into this general area, which is primarily residential. You do have some, you see two nearby. Staff recommends the R three residential zone, which allows a horizontal property regime, which would not require a public road to be built. You could still have single units on one lot and it could be clustered away from the steep slopes on the site. Applicant could request a setback variance from the R three through Board of Zoning Appeals. Kind of those are hardships, but in this case you have steep slopes on the site you're trying to preserve and protect. So staff recommended to deny the UGC, approve R three with condition. Development only to occur between the seven seventy-eight and eight oh six topo line, with exception of the tension pond as identified on Hamilton County GIS map. And here's a site thing submitted with that request, sort of highlighting where those topo lines are. So trying to preserve, I think that's trying to preserve the steep slopes. Staff thinks that R three zone is a better approach through the variance at this location. So staff recommends to deny, but approve R three with a condition.
Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? All right. So yours.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Alan Jones with Stone Creek Consulting. We did have a neighborhood meeting with the Missionary Ridge Neighborhood Association and Councilman Coonrod. They didn't have any issues with our rezoning requests for the development. We're planning to do up here for townhome development. You know, our preference would be UGC with the, with the conditions of residential use only, max height of three stories. And, and actually, we'd probably actually request a max density of eight units per acre. That's what the RTC zoning is. And if you actually look at the public housing that's to the south of us, there are about nine units per acre. So it's in keeping with the density that's already in the area. You know, if the, the comment about the setback with R three. Anytime you go to Board of Zoning Appeals and you do a zoning request change and you get it zoned. They say that is a self-imposed hardship. So they will deny any setback requirements for an R three zone. You know, if, if the Planning Commission and City Council would prefer R three, we could make it work. But I would ask for the condition to be modified to just be a maximum density of eight units per acre. We did find some, some challenging soils in this area. So we are going to have to do some excavation of some of the poorly compacted soils. So there might be a possibility of getting to some of these slopes. But our preference is and our goal is to stay out of the steep slopes because just, you know, trying to be good stewards with all of this. But, you know, GIS overlay topo is not field-run topo. And so, you know, there's going to be some variances. That could be a five or 10-foot difference as far as where the GIS contour is versus where an actual field-line topo is, as far as where the toe and the top of slopes begin. So if, if the desire is to go to R three, our preference would be to just have a density cap of eight units per acre, which would basically push us into, you know, what we're proposing today. But our preference is the UGC.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Anderson.
Alan, did you say if it's UGC, you need a max five per acre, but if it's RT, if it's R three, you need a max of eight per acre?
Eight, 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 sorry, eight units per acre for both options.
Okay, thank you.
What's the setback for R three?
Twenty-five feet.
Now, this is in the urban overlay. It's reduced. Because you're in urban overlay, it's the average of the three hundred feet plus or minus five feet.
For single-family homes.
I believe that's for all.
Is it?
We'll check.
Okay. Okay, I've read the language a few times. I'd just be curious because I've always interpreted that as for single-family homes.
I think what Mr. Jones is saying is correct about the Board of Zoning Appeals and the way they view hardships. It's a self-imposed hardship and a variance wouldn't be granted. So yours.
I appreciate the staff looking at the zoning plan, but it's, the area plan's twenty years old and it calls for single-family housing that would just beg for gentrification and land speculation in that area near East Lake. I move approval of the UGC zone with conditions. Number one, residential use only. Number two, maximum height of three stories. Number three, maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre.
We have a motion and it has been properly seconded with conditions, by the way. And is there any discussion on that?
Just to reiterate, i- it's not the staff's issue. We don't have a newer plan than a twenty-year-old plan and a lot has changed in twenty years.
And we don't have a better zone than UGC.
Not for a few more months.
Three doesn't work.
Yeah.
We've run into that ourselves.
Right.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, that setback does apply to any structure that's in urban overlay, not just.
Did you say fifteen then?
It's the average or plus or minus five feet. So you do the average and that case, I think if it's not, if there's no structure then three hundred feet, I think it's set at five foot. Sorry, fifteen foot, sorry, fifteen foot.
Case two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two six is located at two nine one zero Calhoun Avenue. It's an application to rezone from R two to UGC. And staff has recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Mr. Jones, thank you. Yes, he's good with them. We have a motion to approve with conditions and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two seven. It's located at three one 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 Kelly's Ferry Road. And it's an application to rezone from R one to R three and C two convenience commercial zone with conditions. And staff has recommended to deny. Is there any opposition present? Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Sure. This is case two thousand and twenty-three one twenty-seven. This is a request to rezone from R one residential zone and R two. And residential zone to R three and C two. Proposed use is multi-unit residential, total acres is one point seven acres. Number of units is eighteen. It's a density of ten point five. Just looking at the zoning map, you can see to the north and west of the sites are one. Including this site, we have C two, to the east of the property, C two, and to the south is our, the C two and R two. Applicant did provide three conditions with application, max of eighteen dwelling units for the new C two residential uses only. And for the R three zone, no apartments allowed. Again, there's no, this property was rezoned, a portion of the site was rezoned to C two in two thousand, sorry, from C two to R one in two thousand and two. So this whole entire site was at one point zone C two, but portions of it rezoned to R one in two thousand and two. First, looking at the land use map, this was formerly a church, to the east is commercial shopping center. To the north, a single-unit residential. To the south, across Kelly's Ferry is institutional, a former schoolhouse. You have warehousing. And further south, you have commercial uses along Cummings Highway. And to the west is single-family residential. There's a view of the site from Kelly's Ferry Road. Another view of the site from Kelly's Ferry. North Moss Avenue. This is south of the site, many warehouses. Another view south of the site, which is single-family dwellings. This is southwest of the sky, which is the John A. Patton Rec Center. This is east of the site, which is commercial shopping center. West of the site, single-family. This property is in the Lookout Valley Land Use Plan, which is adopted in two thousand and three. At that time, this was a church and so it recommended institutional uses. It did not provide any guidance on what would, what the land use should be if that church went away. Here's a closer view of that property. You can see it, the blue sort of reverse T. The site is near a commercial node, a park and some warehouse uses. The site was approved, it's on C two, but was rezoned to R one in two thousand and two. So there is previous precedent for zoning at this location. The request does not meet the Lookout Valley Land Use Plan, which is, you know, a church. However, that was a church when the plan was adopted. So there's no plan for us to use for guidance on what the future land use of this site should be. Staff recommended to deny this request. Since the application and the review and the staff report went out, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting. We got some original information from the applicant. It's not included in your staff report. It's, that's not our process. It typically happens here. So this was the site plan that was submitted with a request, included entirety of the property. Applicant provided revised conditions, max of eighteen dwelling units on the property. For the new C two zone, residential use and short-term vacation rental only. That short-term vacation rental was added. For the R three zone, HPR style, HPR-style development with townhomes and single-family homes only. No access to Central Street allowed. No vehicle or access easement through the remaining R one property to North Moss Avenue allowed, an existing church building to remain. We also received a revised site plan. The applicant is no longer wishing to rezone the property of budding. I think it's Kelly's Ferry, but to the west, highlighted in the red circle. So the request has been reduced in some locations here. So staff recommendations still is to deny this request. Applicant did submit revised materials.
Can you go back to those conditions real quick?
Sure.
That, that third condition where we're, I think we've done it once before where we conditioned something that it be HPR, we, we can't do that. I mean, I'm telling you, we can't do that. That's no different than making a condition that an easement be recorded or, I mean, that's that's a private document that is in essence a master deed with a bunch of easements and those sorts of things. It, it's no different than requiring a condo association be set up.
Right. Yeah, this is provided by the applicant.
Okay. I just wanted to air out the fact that I don't think we can have conditions that we require it be set up as an HPR. And I don't think that's enforceable by a municipality any more than it would be requiring an easement or something like that. So. All right. Mr. Jones.
Alan Jones of Stone Creek Consulting. So as Brian mentioned, I did have, we had a larger neighborhood meeting on August third. A couple of weeks prior to that, I also met with the board members of the, of the, of that north, sorry, Lookout Valley Neighborhood Association. The, the board at that initial meeting, after we kind of talked through these six conditions, they didn't have any, any, any heartache with this rezon request. At, on the August third meeting, we did have about fifty or sixty residents show up to the meeting. And after the meeting, Councilman Henderson got up and asked for a vote, as he likes to do often. We had about eight folks that voted in opposition, but the remaining of the, of the neighborhood did vote in favor of this. Now, I will state that they don't want any development, but they said between the existing use versus proposed use, they did prefer the, the rezone site plan and rezone conditions that we put forth. they did prefer the, the rezoned site plan and rezoned conditions that we put forth. To kind of talk through, so this exhibit here is what I presented at the neighborhood meeting. The, the graphic on the left essentially demonstrates what we can do today. Essentially trying to illustrate that, you know, right now, we can tear down the church. We can build 14 apartment units on this site. And then we can do single family units on the remaining pieces with, with 2ADUs, which is a total of 18 units. And so that's how we came to the, to the, to the conclusion of requesting a maximum of 18 units, because that's what we're allowed by right today. And this developer already owns the property and is ready to move on it. So with the, with the conditions, I, I agree that the originally, the original condition was to have no apartments. I think there was some concern from a permitting standpoint that that needed to be clarified a little better. But if it, if we need to just strike out the HPR style development and just write for the R3 zone, townhome and single family homes only, I would be fine with that, with that approach. But I'll, I'll leave the, the reigning time to the opposition to see what they have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions for the applicant? All right, we'll hear from the opposition.
My name is Tracy Burton. I live 3205 Kelly's Ferry Road. And I'm talking about, I live on the corner, adjacent corner of them. And the 3115. He passed away. We just buried him Saturday, but he's, he owns the corner lot there that you see on your drawings. And the drawing that y'all have and what they gave us that we voted on at the Neighborhood Association is not the same. So they give us under false pretenses what we was voting on. What was going to be there. I'm, it don't, it don't bother me that he rezoned it. Because my property will be rezoned after he gets his. But I'm speaking for the neighbors. I've lived in the Lookout Valley area for 55 years. But we've asked him questions at the meeting that nobody could address. We have a bad water problem. All of the stormwater comes from the storage facility goes in his back parking lot. The neighbors, it runs into the neighbor's yard, which the city has a right of way through there. A sewer right of way that, that they was going to abandon the right of way for the sewer, for the city and block it off. Where there wouldn't be no access for the people to come in and out of. The traffic is terrible there already trying to get out on Cummings Highway or Brown's Ferry or you can get out on Kelly's Ferry. But my, my problem is, is the access for, for his people coming in on Moss Avenue. Now he's showing, he's going to put three apartments, I guess. I don't know. It's not on my drawing that they give us that we voted on. He had an apartment with AD, ADU on it. Which I don't have a problem with him having it. I have rental property there. Mine's rental property. So what he has is, is the same thing I'm going to do, except for he, this is, he's showing a C2 zoning on that building that he's wanting to make four apartments out of, and it's an R1. And they posted a sign that says R1 to C2 to C3. Or R3, I'm sorry. R3 and C2 is what he posted. None of the neighbors back there knew that they was three pieces of property in that. The church, the parking lot, and the fellowship hall is three separate pieces of property. But they only posted a sign saying they're going from R1 to C, C2 and R3, I think is what it says. I can look at the phone, but anyway, what it is. I just feel like that they give us false pretenses when we went to the meeting and the people that were stood up there, that was 20 of us from the adjacent to property. And I just feel like somebody needs to stand up.
What is there, I just don't understand. Is there a specific issue that you need the applicant to address, or is it?
Well, yeah, because he's given us three different drawings of what he's going to do. And
That, that's fine. We can make sure that it addresses.
And we done that. And then one other thing that's on the air, guy, with these conditions that he's putting on here, who is going to enforce these conditions?
The city would. Let me, let me make sure we hear from the fellow behind you, and then we'll make sure that the applicant shows us the site plan that we're all supposed to be looking at.
My name is Frank Collins. I live in Tiftonia, 338 Shanty Lake Drive. You're opening this up to C2 property. Y'all have put in your statements that you're trying to keep the vacation rentals out of the areas. Residential areas. This opens the, a company of, and I'm not against them making money. That's what they're there for. But you're opening up them properties to open these vacation rentals when you're holding the residents away from them. I've got four. I would like to have more. But you're going toward them, leaning toward a company that has nothing in the, in the area. They're there to make money. And that's pretty much what they're there for. This, you know, to, basically, if I have a lot in Tiftonia, I have to have 60-foot of road frontage to access it. They've got less than 20 feet, about 20 feet to get around that church building to access what they're trying to build in there. So you're going to bring out, I don't know, what was it, 14 units out of that one area? You're going to have up to probably 12, by my figures, 11 or 12 vacation rentals in it, possibly, on the C2 properties. I don't see that that's fair to the community. Pretty much what I've got on it. And I don't blame them for making money. That's where your money's at. But, you know, you set standards. You don't want to put the vacation rentals in, into residential areas. This is a residential area. That's my say on anything.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Hopefully I can shed a little clarity on, on the site plan confusion. So the original site plan that was submitted with the application, it did show a triplex along North Moss Avenue. After we met with the board members of the, of the Neighborhood Association, yeah, that right there. We were, we, I removed those three, that triplex from the site plan, and we removed that whole three, R3 request from the rezoning requests altogether. So that will remain R1. The split graphic, Brian, if you don't mind showing that one. This is what was presented at the neighborhood meeting. This was the handout that was, that was provided. So where the red circle is, that's a, a single family house with an ADU attached to it on an, on a R1 lot that's going to remain. So that's, that, this is what was presented to the, the Neighborhood Association meeting and also emailed out to the president prior to the meeting. So she had all that information. So I think hopefully that addresses that portion. As far as the rezoning, the bulk property of the church is already zoned C2. So the request is from R1 to C2 slash R3. The request for the C2 portion is for the old fellowship hall. If this was to remain, if we don't change the zoning, we would do the apartment complex and convert the fellowship hall into like a community building kind of thing for the, for the apartment complex and explain that to the, at the meeting. This would, if, putting this as C2 would allow us to make it into four apartments. We did have a discussion of C2 versus R3, but with short-term vacation rental, we, I was very clear that, you know, we would like to do some short-term vacation rentals on the site. But, you know, we'll have a total of nine, nine units on the C2 portion. And with the 25% rule, I think it's two, maybe three, short-term vacation rentals that we could possibly have on the site after 18 months. I think that addresses most of the concerns, but I'll answer any questions if, if permission has any.
Mr. Anderson?
More of a comment. Council has recently clarified that residential use only specifically prohibits short-term vacation rentals.
Correct.
So if you have a residential use only condition on the C2, you cannot do any short-term vacation rentals. Without that, you're correct, you could do two.
That's right. And that's, and that's why we were specific in that language to the neighborhood meeting for the new C2 zone, which is just around the, the old fellowship hall. It's residential use and short-term vacation rental use only, so that we were clear. Existing C2 already is permissible for short-term vacation rental.
Any other questions for the applicant? It's the world of commission.
Do you like to scratch the HPR style development language for clarity?
We have a motion and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
The, is the maximum 18 dwelling units predicated on the version that has the triplex?
No, it's the revised site plan.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Item 17 on our agenda, case 2023 dash 0128 is located at 2001 Hollister Road. And it's an application to rezone from R2A Rural Residential District and O1 Office District to C3. General Business Commercial District and has a staff recommendation to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? All right.
Mr. We did receive email in opposition as well to this.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, you may remember this case. It was before this body about two months ago. This is a request for 2023 128 to rezon from R2A Rural Residential District to O1 Office. Just R2A Rural Residential and O1 Office to C3 Business, General Business Commercial District for part of the property. Proposed use is commercial RV storage. It's 3.2 acres in size. Looking at the zoning map, there's C3 to the south and C2. To the north is R2. To the east of this site's R2, and to the west is C2 and, and R2A. There's been no zoning history, but sorry, there was zoning history of this piece of property in 2023, case 45. The request at that time was, was to rezon the entire site to C3. The application was withdrawn prior to county commission meeting. Plank Commission recommended to deny, this is before the body about two months ago. In 2004, the property to the south was rezoned from O1 to C2. The application was denied. Then in 1987, 341, sorry, 378 Taft Highway was rezoned from O1 to C3 in 1987, just to the south of this site. And this is a vacant piece of property. To the north, a single unit residential. You have commercial uses to the south and utility, and to the west, it's single unit to the southwest of the site. It's about 230 feet to the north of Taft Highway. There's a view of the site. A view of the site. This is Hollister Road looking north, east of the site. South of the site, this is the intersection of Hollister Road and Taft Highway. South of the site, across Taft Highway. This is in the Wolf, sorry, Walden Ridge Plateau Area Plan, which is adopted in 1997. The plan recommendation at that time was commercial uses. It also had planned goals and no, new commercial goals should be balanced to maintain rural mountain character. Commercial node development is encouraged to strip commercial developments. So this plan recommendation of 97 does recommend commercial at this location. A portion of this request is compatible with Walden Ridge Plateau Area Plan, recommend, which is a recommendation for commercial center at this intersection. Staff does recommend approval with conditions related to use, access and buffering to ensure compatibility surrounding land uses. So staff recommends approval with five conditions. Office, single family and two-family dwellings, barber and beauty shops, RV and boat storage only. Sales and services of RVs, boats and vehicles are prohibited. No access off of Hollister Road. On-site sewage disposal for, for RVs, boats and other vehicles is prohibited. A top B landscape, which is 25 foot along Hollister Road and R2A zone portion of the parcel number 089BA9. Existing vegetation can fulfill buffer requirements and is preferred to remain. And finally, condition number five, lighting shall be directed down and away from surrounding residential properties. So this comes to the Plank Commission with a recommendation to prove with five conditions. And we do have a, here's a previous site plan that was submitted with a previous case. This is the new site plan. You're showing leaving an area, abutting the properties to the north is a buffer. That's to remain is zoned as R2A. Here's the site, new site plan showing access, not off Hollister, but off Taft Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right. Mr. Peppers?
My name's Ben Peppers. I'm the applicant, looking to rezon the property on Taft Highway to C3. We're proposing to leave roughly one-third of the property as vegetated buffer from our, our previous request. We have received and reviewed the RPA recommendation to approve with the conditions, and I understand all the conditions. It is in keeping with the neighboring zones and the land use plans. There's a MapCo, a Dollar General, a former restaurant, a car wash. And I do sympathize with any of the neighbors that don't want any, any new development to come into here. But this is a very low-impact commercial use.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Wild?
Thank you. Says that one of the conditions is no access off Hollister Road, but it looks like the site plan has access from Hollister Road?
No. See, so that's Hollister Road on, on the right side. We will not have any access off of it. Everything comes in off Taft Highway.
Okay, the, the version of the, of the plan that we have in our packet is different than the one that we're looking at there. So that's the first time I've seen that one. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, you've got a couple of folks here in opposition. We want to hear from them and then you'll have the opportunity to respond.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Trout. I live 1905 Hollister Road. Several had to go home and get kids, so they're not also here. But we did turn in some signatures on our petition on Friday. And I do speak on behalf of my neighbors here as well. We oppose rezoning 2001 Hollister Road to commercial C3. We moved a signal because we liked the rural setting and the community and the schools. And we chose our home because it checked all of those boxes for us with an amazing backyard where we do spend most of our time, as do my neighbors here that are here. And it is currently zoned R2A01, which is in keeping with the residential aspects of the neighborhood. Even O1 is office would mean limited office hours, lighting times and traffic. Whereas commercial C3 means extended open hours as 24/7. More traffic, increased safety concerns, and exposes our community to possibly an even more invasive business in even light manufacturing uses in the future if zoned as C3. The property adjacent that's directly on Taft Highway is vacant and for sale on already zoned C3. It's also highway frontage. It's where the restaurant was, that is no longer there. So I don't understand why we'd be taking additional property, which is not frontage Taft Highway, and zone that to commercial. That also evets all of us on our residential property. It also would lead to decreased property value of our homes, increased noise and light pollution, and puts the safety of our families at risk and our homes, since the site is 24/7 with no staff on site, as an RV and boat storage facility. And traffic, we still think is going to be an issue as RVs and boats pull out of the proposed Taft Highway site. They're going to pull into MapCo and gas up and get supplies. Well, when they do that, they have to pull onto Hollister to get back to Taft Highway. We're going to have RVs and boats and congestion still on Hollister Road. Because of the way that they're going to be coming in, they're going to pull to the left, go in, come back out and have to take Hollister Road back out. It's a dangerous intersection. My son's bus gets off there. I hate that he has to get off the bus there. I'm actually trying to get a new, a new stop because there is a bus that goes out by our house. Adding RVs and boats is just going to increase the traffic and the litter to our homes. Kami has litter all across her yard all the time, especially when it rains. That water just rushes down into her yard and there's lots of litter. I understand MapCo's there. We can't do anything about it, but adding to that problem increases problems for the residents who have been there for years. We also have concerns about gas and oil and engine fluids as there is still a Blue Line Creek on this property, which leads to Fairmount Branch, then to Marshall Creek and becomes Falling Water Creek. Gas and oil engines, they're, they're going to leak from RVs and boats and could wash into that creek and end up damaging the ecosystem and soil along these waterways. And stormwater is still a concern. We still have issues. But if there is a covered parking area for RVs and boats, unless there's gutters to divert that water somewhere, it's going to end up in our yards. We already have standing water with crazy storms that we've been having. As noted by RPA in the previous proposal that was mentioned earlier, the site is located in the Walden's Ridge Plateau Plan from 1997. Which I know we have to go by that, but it does state that new Um, which I know we have to go by that, but it does state that new commercial growth should be balanced with the community's desire to maintain rural mountain character. Also described as a small mixed-use node that serves the daily needs of the surrounding population. Um, rezoning that property does not maintain rural mountain character, nor does it serve the daily needs of the surrounding population. The two who benefit from rezoning to C three is the seller, Mr. Hetzler. As he's going to get more money for that property if it is rezoned to C three versus what it's currently zoned. And the buyer, Mr. Peppers. So it's not a doctor's office, a dental practice, a local coffee shop, or anything that could be deemed daily needs of the surrounding population. Or any jobs that are going to be created for the community. Um, what it does and seems to me that is a high-end home builder. Mr. Peppers, uh, is building homes in areas on signal such as Flipper Bend. Which is a hundred and ninety-nine homes, high-end luxury gated homes. Who, um, have HOAs and covenants that do not allow RV and boat parking at these homes. And there's a reason that they're not allowed is because they're unsightly. Um, and yet, Mr. Peppers wants to put them in our backyard. So he can sell more homes and build more homes in other locations on the mountain. So, um, he's going to be the only one to benefit from this, other than Mr. Hetzler, who's going to sell the property. Uh, it's not the community. It doesn't fit within. The standards of the daily needs of the surrounding population and maintaining rural character. Um, Mr. Peppers also said in a community meeting that we had that he lives nearby. A quarter of a mile away in the April twenty, twenty-sixth meeting with residents, when in fact he lives one point one miles away still. Uh, and no matter which way he comes up the mountain, he by no means has to go by this property. We live here. Um, when I recommended building a home or two on this parcel, which is great property for it, it's flat. You don't find flat property on Signal Mountain very often. Um, he stated, well, who would want to live there? Well, we do. We have already invested our homes and our lives in this community in this area. So we are asking, um, to please deny C three. Once it goes to C three, even if he builds his. Facility there for boat and RV, what's it going to be in five years and ten years? It's not frontage highway road. It's our backyards. So we do just. Please request, um, that you deny this and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Peppers.
I believe that most of the, uh, conditions that the RPA, uh, recommended. Um, for this will probably address a lot of her concerns. Um, we've also partnered with Reagan Smith as our civil engineer. To handle stuff like stormwater and everything like that will be addressed, of course, with them before we get under construction. Um, and I have met with Chip Baker and he is in belief that it's in keeping with the neighboring zonings and surrounding businesses.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Lehman. Uh, Brian, just a, just a question because, you know, a lot of times we'll see where zones sort of transition, which is sort of what it was maybe prior to. C three, O one. R two, R one. I'm, I'm anticipating probably by leaving. That portion of, of, I guess it's R two. Yeah, R two A. I'm assuming by leaving a, a large portion of that backtrack. Which takes into account, I guess, a buffer with the majority of the, of the residents, maybe not that one lot on Hollister. But is that, is that sort of the, the thought relative from a, from a planning commission oversight that, that that still left? An undeveloped. Buffer per se to transition from a C three to an R two.
Correct. And I think last time staff recommended. Just on the screen with O one is, is for that O one rezoned to C three, keep the remainder of the property R two A. This is sort of halfway in between. Uh, that was our thinking too, to keep that remainder R two as a buffer between this development and, uh. Adjoining single family along, I guess it's Umbarger Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schultz, what are the uses of the R two A? I mean, there's nothing prohibiting the applicant from developing that. He's just not rezoning it.
It's not really, you do single family. You could do duplexes by special permit, uh, but primarily it's single family.
Okay. But it couldn't be developed as.
A commercial establishment.
Yeah, or any of the other uses that are currently planned for any of the other.
Correct. And you had to build a road to get back to that. I'm just not sure, you know, there's, there's not much of that.
It would be very difficult, if not impossible, to ever build houses on it, right?
I think so. I think you got septic too. The lots we have to be so big on septic through there.
So pretty much that's undevelopable after this other development happens theoretically. Okay. What's the world of commission? Mr. Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I mean, just, you know, I think, I think one of the things that that being that. Kind of far out and, and, and on that backside of Walden's Ridge. You know, I think protecting the, the dark sky environment back there is, I, I think the light pollution that could come from something like this is, is a point of concern. Um, would, in, in lieu of the, you know, I think we've already established that. Condition number five is, is sort of part of baked into the, to the actual regs, but I, what I'm wondering is could, would you be willing to go a step further and sort of limit it to, to require dark sky compliant fixtures? Just to make sure that none of that light pollution, um, a, a, affects the, the, that sort of pristine dark sky area of the county. Fair, but, but, you know, uh, that doesn't mean that we should further the light pollution.
Mr. Chairman, I respond to Mr. Lyle's question, uh, earlier when I said lighting is in the zoning code, that's in the CHI new only. It's not in this county. That's why that's a specific condition from staff to put that a condition in.
Mr. Matthews.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, I move to, um, approve following the staff's conditions.
We have a motion to approve with staff conditions. Did you want to? Add anything in regards to Mr. Lyle's comment? The applicant seemed to be fine with it.
I would be open to what, whatever.
I think it's terminology that's, that, that we would find in several of the other zoning. Um, ports like, um, Form Based Code, I think, has some language about dark sky compliant fixtures. So it's not, you know, foreign to, to the zoning ordinance. So I would just say that, that the lighting be dark sky compliant.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We have a motion with conditions to approve. I need a second and, um, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next case on the agenda, item eighteen, case twenty twenty-three dash zero one two nine, located at two thousand Dodds Avenue. Is an application to rezon from M two to R three. And the staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? We have a motion to approve with conditions and it has been seconded, but we have yet to hear whether or not the applicant's actually okay with the conditions. You are okay with them? Would you? Do you want to say something in regards to the conditions or? You don't, don't feel like you need to. Okay. Just wanted to make sure you were heard. We have a motion and a second with conditions to approve. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, next case one thirty-one, which is Mr. Swafford, uh, he would, I think, would like to withdraw this request.
Motion to withdraw and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Case twenty twenty-three dash zero one three two. Is the applicant asked to defer? Do we need to take any action?
She, I don't think we took action earlier, but she, uh, uh, as a question of thirty-day deferal in this case.
We have a motion to defer for thirty days and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-one on our agenda is case twenty twenty-three dash zero one three three. And this is an application that's located at seventy-two eighty-three Bonnie Oaks Drive. And it's for rezoning from R four. With conditions and R one to C two convenience, commercial zone and staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? All right, Brian.
Sure. This is twenty twenty-three one thirty-three. Again, this is a request to rezone from R four special zone with conditions and R one residential zone. To C two, uh, convenience, commercial with conditions, proposed uses retail. Uh, then with acreage is two point six one. Looking at the zoning map, there's a mixture of zones in this area from. C two to the east, uh, to the south is R one. Uh, to the west, this side's R one and to the north immediately abutting this property is RTZ. And further north along Old Cleveland Pike is R Z one. Um, there's a mixture of zones at this location. Applicant did provide several listed conditions on uses being prohibited from adult, I mean, the. Alternative financial services, billboards, alcohol sales. Motels, hotels, short-term vacation rentals, tattoo establishments, convenience stores. Drug and alcohol, penal correctional, halfway houses, adult-oriented establishments and late-night entertainment event facilities, uh, are prohibited as provided by the applicant. Uh, there was some zoning history on this particular piece of property. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, there was a request to rezone from R one to C two. Staff recommended to deny the request. Uh, city council resigned a portion of the site. To R four with conditions and C two with conditions. The reason staff recommended to deny C two was. Trying to hold the line of further expansion of C two along the northern side of Bonnie Oaks beyond Silverdale Road. You can see in the zoning map. Uh, it's starting to creep down Bonnie Oaks, uh, road. Here's another view, just showing you a zoomed-out view of what the commercial zoning looks like. Most of it's concentrated at Lee Highway and Bonnie Oaks. Do have some further south of Bonnie Oaks, but it really stops at Silverdale on the northern side of Bonnie Oaks. We're trying to hold that line of further expansion of commercial. Uh, the R zone, our, our four zone property as it stands today does have conditions. Same conditions almost applicant provided earlier, uh, in terms of prohibited uses. The C two zone portion of property has a lot of conditions as well related to prohibited uses. Again, most of this came through city council when it was rezoned. It's a vacant piece of property, uh, to the east is commercial, uh, south is institutional Silverdale Baptist, uh, church and school. Uh, we have commercial uses along Bonnie Oaks to the south, to the west, a single unit residential. And to the north, the single unit residential, uh, cross, across Old Cleveland Pike. There is a small portion of this property that's in the floodway and flood plain. You can see on the, uh, natural resources map that's on the screen. View of the site. Another view of the site. It's gone off the screen out here, north of the side in Thibon Pike. This is south of the site, Silverdale Baptist Church. This is east of the site, Taco Bell. West of the site, which is single family dwelling. And this is looking at Bonnie Oaks Drive. Uh, this is an old, uh, older plan, two thousand four, shallow road, Lee Highway plan, which recommends single unit residential. The primary use is to have single unit dwellings. It does have a focus area at this location, which recommends follow land use plan, designates this area a single unit residential. This area may be appropriate for higher density residential uses in the future. It doesn't, uh, recommend commercial uses at this location. Here's a closer view of that plan recommendation. You can see on the plan, it's trying to hold the line of commercial expansion along Bonnie Oaks Drive. Keeping it further to the east, if you will, at, uh, how, at, uh, High Seventy-five and Country Lane. Staff recommendation is to deny that is proposing commercial use, which is not compatible adopted plan. Um, staff does recognize the plan is more than ten years old, but still provides guidance. Uh, staff recommends to deny this request until new plan is adopted. Will provide further guidance on land use recommendations for the area. The current R four zone with conditions provides a buffer between the adjacent residential and commercial uses. Approving C two at this location was set the precedent for the further expansion of commercial zones and uses on Bonnie Oaks Drive, west of Silverdale Road. On the northern side. So staff recommends to deny based on those, those reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff?
And the, 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 the slide showing the reason that you guys are recommending no. Yeah, so the land use plan is, it says two thousand five, but I think it was two thousand four on the previous slide, but that's a nineteen-year-old land use plan. We all know that was long before Volts Bay. Long before that corner. Uh, started to develop. We did come in here. Not long ago to rezone both of those parcels to C two and met with Councilwoman Burrs. Met with Silverdale. They were okay with us as zoning the corner. The only reason they were not okay with us zoning the property that we're, that we're looking at right now is because we didn't. Have a specific idea of what we were going to do with it. And so now we're kind of coming back. To do that, we met with, um. Um, I met with Silverdale Baptist Church and Silverdale. Academy. And we've gone through kind of all the lists that, of the things that they wouldn't want. Okay, and then, um. Uh, and that was the whole reason for the R four and then, I mean, the C two, we all, it is going down that way. There are widening Bonnie Oaks that is major commercial thoroughfare. So we're asking that it was, uh, to C two.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Is there any opposition here?
That's been looked for. Thank you, Chairman. Ben, you said that you did not have a specific use when, so you would kind of withdrew that from last time you're talking to Silverdale and Dr. Burrs. What's changed?
We have a specific use. It is a coffee user. We have made Silverdale aware. We have sent them. I've met with them, sent them emails. They're on board with it. We're okay.
Because there's a weird condition.
You know, and I'm glad you brought it up because I did point blank, just come out and tell them that it's a, it's a national copy chain. I said, that's fine.
Dr. Burr said it was okay too.
Uh, she said that we need, I need to work with them directly and then.
Cause that was a really weird.
That was a very odd one. Yeah, and I think, I think we all knew in that past that it was, I mean, I, I wasn't planning on ever putting a copy place there, but.
That's okay, because I've done weird ones too.
We need to probably be back.
And that, that condition is on the screen that they're all talking about. That's number fourteen, no re, no retail established where coffee sales are a major source of income.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So is that in violation of, of that?
Well, that condition, this condition will be, we're, so. The weird thing about that condition is that one condition was also put on the property. Wait a minute.
That, that condition on the.
That was put on the Taco Bell property.
That it was, it was also put on the R four property where I couldn't go to a coffee place if I wanted to anyway. So, you know, I think it was just a, a belt and suspenders.
Yeah, the Oaks, yeah.
So, yeah, that condition, whatever it is, needs to be lifted.
So you'll have to come back and re, sorry.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I mean. Lift those conditions.
Does not automatically lift with the rezone?
The re, you would, would on the R four. The C two still has that conditions. That's not part of this request.
Okay.
The R four then, when I resented to C two, does it automatically lift the original condition?
Yes.
Okay.
But your C two.
With the new conditions will go on there.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Dan.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the reasons that we were kind of, uh. Supportive to keep it the way it is with R four is that, um, this is a major employment area. I mean, we don't have a lot of expectation. We don't know right now what could happen with the rest of Enterprise South. But my, my feeling is, is we go forward with our planning process, we need to look at this area as kind of a, a major job center and be thinking about more residential out there, not more retail. Um, but that's, so that's kind of my, my position is we should be looking at Enterprise South and the whole area as, as a major employment area today and in the future.
Thank you. What's the world of commission? Mr. Matthews.
I'm inclined, I mean, I, I, I agree. I don't, I don't like to extend that, that C two out. But this plan is very old and I'm inclined to, uh. To, um, approve this. Uh, the, the, the conditions that he has already put on there.
They're on the screen right now. This is the applicant proposed conditions.
Okay, that's my motion. Yeah, unless you see anything.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion to approve with conditions. Applicant's proposed conditions and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, please pardon, uh. My next statement for those of you that went through this previously, but would somebody humor me and bring me up to speed on the previous conversation about the no coffee shop thing? It's available on YouTube on chadnega.gov. Is there like a Cliff Notes version? The church had just asked if we not do, do coffee right there because they have coffee and I went and met with them. I told them what we were doing. I told them we were doing coffee and they said, okay. They have a. They have a coffee shop right there on the corner. And they were concerned about competition. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Barrett recused himself. Next case on the agenda is item twenty-two, case twenty twenty-three dash zero one three four. And this is located at six thousand eleven Lee Highway. And it's an application to rezone from C two to UGC. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Are you familiar with the conditions? Are you fine with the conditions? Can you come up and ask that before we hear from Mr. Schultz?
Again, Dave Fadati, Wise Construction, um, wanted to just clarify if I could, the uh, one condition related to uh, public spaces between the building and the right of way. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that site, but there is a bridge that basically, there you go. That would be uh, coming down through on, on the front of a significant section of that site, which, you know, the fifteen feet is not a problem. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page about what constitutes public space on what we would propose to be a a residential community that would, we would hope to provide security on that. Typically meaning a fence or something, you know, and a gate to get in.
That's a good question.
I think we were just trying to push the building back from the right of way. Uh, this is UGC. Uh, it requires a zero foot setback front. You can't go back further. Fifteen foot max if you provide public space along, which in this case would be Lee Highway.
How, how is public space defined?
I don't think it defines. I'll look. We all keep talking.
How, how would you, how, how was the, how would the fifteen feet get developed currently? Tell us how that would take shape.
Uh, I mean, we might move the building slightly closer, but honestly, it doesn't, that close to the, to the right of way on the property line. There's not a lot of, the fifteen feet doesn't really change our plan at all one way or another because of how difficult.
What goes in the fifteen feet of setback is in your plan? What would go in that fifteen feet?
Probably just a grassy area, continued sidewalk.
Yeah, I think you're going to be fine.
In the zoning code, it says um if intentional public space or pedestrian activity spaces provided between the building and right of way, such as a park, plaza, outdoor dining or sculpture garden. As example, it doesn't mean it has to be exactly that. I think you can be fine.
Or horizontal concrete, four feet by four and a half inches.
Okay.
That's, that's a sculpture. Message for all conditions and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next case is twenty twenty-three dash zero one three five and it's located at the sixty-nine hundred block of Ramsey Town Road. And it's an application for a special permit for an event facility. And staff is recommended to approve the applicant's request with conditions. Is there any opposition present?
Staff did receive a female opposition.
Okay, and is the applicant present? Okay, Mr. Schultz.
This is twenty twenty-three, one three five. It's not a rezoning request. This is a special permit for a special event venue, which is basically a wedding venue. It's nine point five four acres in size. Uh, there's not really a number of units being developed. Uh, so looking at the zoning map. It's all A one. You do have R five, immediately butting the property to the north. And you have R one to the east of the site, R one to the west. Again, this is not a rezoning. This is a special permit. Uh, there's no zoning history on this particular piece of property, but we have had a um, in two thousand and twenty-three, we had a a sixty-eight oh eight Ramsey Town Road about two months ago in front of this body. Rezone from R five to A one for a pole barn. That was approved at county commission last month. Here's the aerial view of the site. You can see it's a single family dwelling on the property. Uh, largely landscape in buffered uh to the rear. You have vacant property to the north, single unit to the east, agriculture uses to the west, I mean, south and single unit to the west of the property. It's about three thousand feet to the north of Highway fifty-eight and Ramsey Town Road. Here's a view of the natural, there are some little slopes on it, but not much. It just slopes back to the west. View of the site. Another view of the site. Go through these quickly. You can see a single family detached rooms on Ramsey Town Road. The request with conditions is compatible adjacent land use and developmental form. These conditions are uh to limit the location of the event facility, structures and the number of attendees to eliminate possible nuisance on adjacent residential property. This, this comes to the plant, a plant commission recommendation to approve with two conditions. No buildings or structure shall be located one hundred feet of the northern, southern and western property lines. Again, that's to provide a buffer uh between the adjacent residential uses and a maximum of one hundred attendees. The permit itself allows three hundred max. Staff's recommending no more than one hundred at this location to try to control some of the nuisance, possible nuisance issues on adjacent properties. So staff recommends to approve.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
I'm, I'm Brooke Christessing. So my husband and I are the property owners at sixty-nine hundred Ramsey Town Road. Um, and so we are, I'm wanting to do a small wedding and event venue um, on our property. What you can't see in the picture, it shows an open field, but there's actually the majority of the property is wooded. And so we're wanting to be toward the central portion of that wooded area is where we want to actually um, have the activities happening. Um, we, our own, what we're wanting to start with is actually a maximum of fifty guests, not of course counting the host or vendors. Um, so we're uh really targeting doing a much smaller events. Um, we're trying to um make an affordable wedding venue option for our community because um, there aren't very many affordable ones uh, around where we're at right now. Um, we actually got married on the property ourselves a couple of years ago and um if we hadn't had it, then we wouldn't have really been able to, you know, have a, a nice wedding. So we want to, we want to be able to provide that to our community. Um, and we have taken in consideration things to be um, considerate of our neighbors with noise because we do also live, we're a resident on the street. You know, we live on the um uh, adjacent parcel right there. So uh, you know, we do, we understand there are ordinances as far as no amplified sound after nine P M. Um, we're going, we plan to enforce those ordinances um, and volume levels through contracts that our um, guests would have to sign and adhere to. Um, and um, so yeah, if there's, if I can, I guess, save my time and answer any questions after.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Are there any questions before we hear from the opposition? Okay, we'll hear from your neighbors first and then you'll have the opportunity to respond. Reminder to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Tucker and I'm representing my mother, Wanda Tucker, which is adjoins the proposed venue to the south. Her biggest concern is the privacy with the noise and music and people partying over way into the night. My father recently passed away and his, his intent was to build my mother a single-story home, fully handicapped and inseparable and was starting it on the spring of twenty twenty-three. We are now building my mother's dream home and it's less than one hundred feet off of the property line for the proposed venue. That is not privacy. The driveway to access the venue is directly on the property line and where vehicles go in and out will be shining lights into her new house. The parking lots are very close and everything that goes on and then will be heard from her house. This property is mostly hills and everything that goes in and out would be heard in all directions. It'll echo. The people that touch the property to the west, which is River Cove, that's a subdivision, will have a restroom slash shower trailer very close to their back door. This means that they will have the luxury of smelling sewer when it's pumped by sewage truck. I don't know why they're wanting a trailer. I guess they can't put in septic lines or all that, which is great, but that does not need to be against the people's houses where they're living. Most of all, the people that are affected by this are elderly, elderly families that are now living in the home that they will retire in. If this venue is approved by county commission, this will change the lives and dreams of everyone adjoining the property. Not counting the affected along Ramsey Town Road.
I'm Vanessa Tucker Thompson. I'm also the daughter of Wanda Tucker at sixty-five oh one Ramsey Road. I'm representing a few neighbors who are not able to stay here the rest of the afternoon um, on Ramsey Road. And their segments were that approving a low-cost wedding venue is not keeping with the surrounding area land use and doesn't, wouldn't add value to the character of the community. We are additionally concerned with the applicant's statement of fifty max guests, although the special permit does note the capacity of no more than three hundred. It does state not including event staff. And then the staff has recommended condition of no more than a hundred attendees, which we're not sure would include also event staff. There seems to be no consistency in the numbers. Noting um, the zoning history, the site is A one and R five, single wides. And then as noted, it was um, changed at sixty-eight oh eight and sixty-eight fourteen Ramsey Town Road. Um, a rezoning to A one. We also have horses and intend to put a few head of cattle on our property. My brother just fenced in ten acres to move his horses to my mom's property. Um, and we do intend to keep animals on that property. Also note the language that no other special permits for event facilities are in this area. That is on this, the staff recommendation or staff um, proposal. There are no other event areas. Um, there are other low-cost options in the area. Harrison Bay State Park not only has pavilions open and closed that are very um, reasonable cost, but you can go to Chester Frost State Park. You can go to the Gray Dove for, I'm not going to tell you it's a minimal cost, but it's lower than a lot of some of the areas. And then um, that is on Snow Hill Road and then Chestnut Hall also has opportunities in College Dale. So there are opportunities there. In the permit request, the applicant stated that we love the beauty of that nature provides and as a legacy family having owned twenty-five acres adjacent to this proposed permit, we love nature too, and it's why my parents bought this property in seventy-seven. It's our request that you deny this um opportunity.
Uh, my name's Corey Edmonds. Um, I'm here with my father-in-law. Um, we uh, are at sixty-eight oh eight and sixty-eight fourteen. Uh, so we have plans to um build a, a house with my wife and I there. Um, I would just say um, um, I, I think it was great to hear the noise. Uh, that was one of our concerns uh, being the nine o'clock. Um, I think we're also worried about like how late some of those events might go and the guests there. I think one of our concerns is also the dark sky, um, light pollution kind of request, maybe uh, depending on what that parking lot looks like. My father-in-law is an abbot astronomer, so he was definitely tracking with the earlier conversation. Um, and I think, um, but for me, I'm, I'm supportive. I think they have a great vision for what they're, what they're doing. I think my wife and I would uh, love to have an event like that. But I think my concern is probably the next owner and what is their planned use of the property and how maybe applied open some of the, so I'm not quite sure how this works. This is my first time coming to a meeting like this. Uh, but just making sure that some of those additional conditions are um, thought through uh, with potential uses. I think uh, we're familiar with the haunted hilltop that's not too far away, and I know that's not in the plan, but could someone use that for other special events um, outside of the intended purpose that was expressed today? Thank you.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you. Give me one second, sir, if you don't mind. Brian, does the permit stay at the property or? It stays with the property.
It was not transferred.
If it were to transfer, thank you, thank.
It's Stephen Harding, sixty-three oh six Cedar Cove Lane. I lived in River Cove, one of the two houses that are extremely close to that. The party. Um, I mean, I guess there's a hundred-foot leg, anyway. But that'll put you over the side and you'd have to cut the top of that old hill off, would you know? My concern is if you were to have to level that area. My house sits at the bottom, pretty much at that curb. Everybody's rainwater runs down that through my back property into a gulbert, which is fine because I figured out how to disperse it keep it okay. But if you have to chop any of that down, I'll have to deal with all that runoff into, into the backyard, of course, I guess. Then water runoff, couple of points, the gentleman before me about uh, what could have turned into the next. But they can see, I didn't even know what I was zoned for until I got here today. So I was like, what's going on? And I only heard about it last week. But um I guess the point is, I know that the back part of that, your vet plan, I don't think it needs to be anywhere. Cause there is. And if you have to modify the slope, I'm really not going to be involved, uh, interested in going that route either, because I'd deal here or not too. I know there's a whole big another side of that will run toward Ramsey.
Sir, just make sure you direct all your questions to us. You may get her contact information and follow up with her afterwards, but yeah, it's all right.
But uh forgive me for that.
That's all right.
Those are my concerns.
Thank you.
So I, I certainly understand um, all the concerns that everyone was, was mentioning. Um, and so I wrote down a few that uh, I'll just go ahead and address. So for the, the restroom and shower trailer, yes, we are in order to keep it an affordable um, space, we're going to be an off-the-grid um venue. It's going to be primarily outdoors besides the two um cabins that you see, which will be used for a bride and a groom suite. Um, and of course we'll have some like uh, tent-like structure or not structures, but you know, for contingency for rain and things like that. So in order to make something affordable for our community, um, at this time, we're saving ourselves the cost of bringing utilities up there. Maybe one day down the road we'll do that, but right now to make it affordable, it's going to be um, runoff of uh, either solar or um, you know, really quiet inverter generators. Um, and then a restroom and shower trailer, which my husband himself will be able to uh, haul off at least weekly um, after events to have it, you know, uh, emptied. He's a heavy haul truck driver, so that's something he's very experienced and familiar with. Um, so and, and on the plan, I don't do this every day, so um, that's what the best I could do. Um, and we, I know that looks really close, but of course in the conditions that were mentioned, it would be at least one hundred feet away from all of the property lines there. Um, that's no problem. We'll definitely have to probably do some reconfiguring because we had planned for thirty feet, which was in the original um uh, permit conditions, but they said a hundred, which we're willing to comply with. So we'll just reconfigure kind of how things are going to be set up out there. We want to minimally disturb the land because we do, we love it out there and we uh, tend to have guests that are joining us that want to come enjoy it as it is. So um uh, it, there's not going to be a lot of land disturbance. Um, the two cabins are going to be pretty much the main things that are going to be there other than slightly clearing out some space.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the applicant?
Councilman Ledford. Thank you, Chairman. Um, will you go back to the site plan, Brian? So when I'm looking at your site plan, you know, it's pretty good site. It, I, I see some folks' concerns because it, it seems like you've pushed some of the things that that you don't want to deal with, kind of close to the edge of the property up towards other people's houses. Have you kind of rethought of the plan? And there's no site plan tied at this point, but maybe you could talk with your neighbors and figure out a better way um, to where, put your stuff that you don't want to deal with or, you know, because it looks like you are pushing it kind of right into other people's backyards. And I, I don't think that's kind of, I don't know, I wouldn't, I, I would care for that. Um, I do see what you're like, the driveway, the park. Maybe there's just a better plan that you can come up with, working in conjunction with your neighbors. This is not where that would happen. But um, something to think about. And then uh, would you be amenable to a condition of no more than fifty guests instead of the hundred that the RP has recommended?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Um, and can I respond to this question?
Sure.
So as, as far as that, yes, we would love to work with our neighbors on this. Um, and I, I can see how it would appear that we're pushing that back there. That was not our intention at all. Just looking at the land is how we kind of set it up. Um, but yeah, and, and like I said, with the, the conditions that were mentioned of a hundred feet rather than the thirty we had planned for, we're already going, understanding that we're going to have to reconfigure this site plan. Um, so I would be willing to give my phone number to any neighbors who would like to uh, have an input on that and, and we would, you know, we would love to work with our neighbors in something that's going to be um, better for them as well.
You can't, sorry.
Yep, yes, Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Somewhat out of our purview, but a question for Commissioner Lehman. At what point, you know, does the land disturbance permitting and, and, you know, how much disturb area within the county would require than, you know, stormwater protection plan?
Yeah, more than one acre would require either a T-dec permit for land disturbing or one for water quality. I'm not sure where it is relative to the boundary, but, but yes, disturbance, creating a parking lot and that type of things would, would require potentially, potentially require a permit. Obviously, anything that she mentioned, building some structures, that would, that would require building permits. And then there are erosion sediment control issues or, or oversight with building inspection permits also.
I think the, I think the thing that I'm kind of sort of, you know, slowly working towards is that it, it may be in your best interest to seek the services of a professional civil engineer as you and your neighbors work out that plan. And, and I think if you take the packet that was in here today, there's, there's about a dozen or more highly qualified civil engineers that you can sort of mine this packet for that information. They can help you work through all that, but I would recommend it.
Are you, are you amenable to a thirty-day deferral and some time with your neighbors to work through some of these issues? And maybe, you know, just a little bit more work into the site plan so that, so that we can ultimately attach conditions to this that address the concerns of your neighbors, but also potentially give you a functioning facility.
Sure. And, and I'll, if it's okay, I'll just wait out there for a few minutes. For anyone who would like my phone number, I'll just wait outside the door and give that to them.
Yeah, and what we need, what we need is just some details that aren't on this. And it isn't required with these applications to have a detailed site plan. But then we run into a problem with, you know, we can't see how many cars are parked in your parking lot, whether or not you have enough parking, how big that parking lot is. We can't see how far that road is from the property line and how far the restrooms are from the property lines. It's just a lot of detail that's difficult for us to make a decision where, especially like Councilman Ledford said, it looks like a lot of those kind of development-related activities that are taking place on the site are on the edges of the property. So then when we hear the concerns of the neighbor, we want to respect those. So it'd be really helpful if you could work through those issues and come back next month.
As a reminder, you know, condition number one does restrict those, any structure that hundred feet of property lines.
Yeah, but does it apply to?
The driveway, no.
But it doesn't apply to a trailer.
You think associated with the wedding venue in terms of a structure, I think would have to fall by the hundred foot setback.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, you know, in the instances where we're zoning, the site plan is a little bit less, you know, the, the, the as important, I think, in a instance of a special use permit like this, you know, where we are, we are creating a, an exception for a specific special use. And I think in this instance, wanting to see a little bit more detail on a plan feels a little bit more appropriate.
I've entertained a motion to defer for thirty days.
Moved to approve. I moved to defer thirty days.
Second.
A motion that has been seconded, any discussion? Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next case is a mandatory.
I need to recuse myself from the next three cases, so I'm going to head out.
Well, we still have short-term.
I trust you all on short-term vacation roles.
We have mandatory referral twenty-two-three dash zero-one-three-six. And it's a right-of-way abandonment on an unnamed right-of-way west of, in parallel to the seven-hundred to nine-hundred South Greenwood Avenue. Is there any opposition present? You're hearing opposition?
Yes, we did receive emails in opposition to this.
Okay, is the applicant present? Okay. Mr. Schultz.
I'll go through the first case because I think the first case sort of ties the two cases together. We have a deferral on case twenty-five and twenty-six, or item twenty-five, twenty-six, but this is the most important one I got through today. ZMR twenty-two-three one-thirty-six. This is a mandatory referral for a right-of-way abandonment. Proposed use is Lucy Quarter mixed-use development. And you can see on the screen, the area highlighted in red, that was the proposed relocation of what used to be another right-of-way to the west or east of this site. He was relocated to his potential location shown on the screen. It's Lucy Bowler site. It's proposed to be redeveloped to the east of this side as a single-unit residential. To the south is a single-unit residential. To the west is, of course, the National Cemetery and proposed development Lucy Quarter. Here's a view of the site. A view of the site, center development. The updated request for right-of-way abandonment does not satisfy other requirements from city's adopted abandonment policy as the city has a competing interest in keeping the right-of-way open and the hardships confronting the site's ongoing development have not been clearly demonstrated by the applicant. Staff recommended to deny. But let's see, in twenty-twenty, Bluff Street came down and looks like a railroad right-of-way came down and narrowed to the right. The applicant submitted a mandatory referral to relocate that from its current location to the proposed location highlighted in red. The reasoning for not building this street now is at the intersection to the north up here, the red pointer is, there's a like a rock, a rock outcropping here makes it difficult to develop the road. These other two cases, which is number twenty-six and twenty-seven, abandoned the right-of-way to the south and east of this side. But those were abandoned contingent upon this right-of-way being relocated. Now the applicant doesn't want to build a new right-of-way. There's no compelling reason to abandon the new right-of-way. It should be, remained as open. These typically come from our transportation partners for approval as well. I think they had a recommendation to deny this request. They didn't see any real private interest in banning this right-of-way. So this comes to you, Plan Commission, with a recommendation to deny this abandoned.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Stephen Brady with Reagan Smith Engineers. And he's right, you know, they agreed in twenty-twenty to, it was old right-of-way that was going through the property. It was, it was unopened, it was unimproved right-of-way. And so the owner did agree at that time to relocate the right-of-way like he's shown on the screen here. There are a number of constraints that I'd like to point out. He mentioned the topographic constraints. If you go back to that picture, that first picture of the site right there, that's where the new road would be, where the trees are to the left. There's about twelve to fifteen feet of grade change on the left side of that picture right there, left side of our road. The first thing that I saw on this site as I started looking at it, I wasn't the engineer in twenty-twenty, I just took over recently. The first thing I saw, reading to the geotechnical report, is that the geotechnical report did not recommend that road to be that close to that rock bluff right there. That's the first thing that I saw as I was kind of researching this site. Then the next most important thing, I think, is the distance between where the road would be right there and Holt's Claw Avenue. A new, what basically we're making is a new city block here. And that city block width would only be a hundred and sixty feet wide for a whole city block. If you go back to your map, it shows where the new, where the old right-of-way was going to go. If you look in the whole neighborhood of Highland Park and you can kind of see the scale of it here, just that line of houses on the right side of your page there, none of those blocks are less than two hundred, no, the next block over to the right, actually. Yeah, that whole block there, there's no block widths in all of Highland Park. If you zoom out half, half a mile out, a mile out, none of the blocks are less than two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet wide. This would create a new block, it's a hundred and sixty feet wide. I reached out to somebody at staff just to find out, somebody that wasn't involved in this case, that RPA, and said, what's the minimum width for a city block? If you're designing a city block, I didn't mention the case, I said, hey, you're just designing a new city block, what width would you have? And they came back and said two hundred feet for a minimum width for a city block. And this would be a hundred and sixty feet from the middle of where he has that red line there to Holt's Clave Avenue is a hundred and sixty feet. Also, inside that hundred and sixty feet, parallel to Holt's Claw is a railroad right-of-way that further limits how, how that block can be used right there. So that hundred and sixty feet is already small, plus you're putting a railroad right-of-way right in there. You can also see the orientation of this side. All the other blocks are kind of oriented east to west. This side is more oriented north, north and south. It's really long. And then if you cut that block in half, you're really exaggerating the length-to-width ratio of that block. You can see that, that, that block that it's going to create is going to be super long and skinny. And it doesn't fit with anything else in the area, it's not good design. That's kind of why I'm pushing back against staff recommendation of why the road needs to be there because I feel like it would create a substandard city block. Also, because of the grade change to the left side of that, when we were looking at that picture where those trees are and that rock bluff, this road would, would only serve one side of the street. A new city street typically is double-loaded, right? You've got houses on both sides. But this, because there's fifteen feet of grade change on one side, the only person that can use the street is the owner that doesn't want the street there.
Can you, can you jump to the, to what it is that you're going to do instead of this right-of-way? You just want it abandoned altogether?
Right.
And then no new right-of-way?
No new right-of-way, so he can, so he can be able to develop it, use the area to develop whoever wants to, you know, however that wants to be developed. But there are other constraints I want to point out too, besides the topographic challenges that was mentioned in staff's report. There's existing rock on the side, the site's a brown field, which limits what we can do with it, it's a redevelopment brown field. The property line jogs in there, kind of pinches down the area that we can use, the railroad I mentioned. And there's also drainage that goes towards the railroad there that doesn't really have an outfall. So all these things together kind of limit what we're doing. On, on the, on the left side of your screen there, you can see the blue is the proposed right-of-way that we're doing. We're not getting rid of the right-of-way altogether. Anderson Avenue was there, formerly made this weird jog that went up to near Holt's Claw and came out. So we're fixing that and squaring that off so that purple section is going to remain right-of-way. There's two entrances into the site. One will be Anderson Avenue, and we're going to rework that to make it nice and neat. And then Lucy, Lucy Lane will be that purple section going there. From there on, it'll be a private driveway in the yellow. And then we, the green on the screen will be pedestrian access from Union Avenue to the side. But I think the city also is saying there needs to be connection from Union all the way down to Bennett. And I just don't agree with that. Holt's Claw is right there next to it, I mean, a hundred and sixty feet away. And then you have the next street down, it's not that far down to be able to connect to both sides. I'm open to any questions you guys have about the site. I feel like there's a lot of constraints, you know?
Thank you. Yeah. We want to hear from those, I think this gentleman here is in opposition, want to hear his comments.
Robert O'Connor, one thousand two South Greenwood. Two primary issues. One is the current use of the site by Tomahawk Construction, and the second is air quality. We have a pretty tight neighborhood, the folks that live on the one thousand block of Greenwood. And we were all excited with the original plan. We certainly don't know what the plan is. As it was scheduled to open in twenty-twenty-one, then the sign was changed to twenty-twenty-three. And it's not close to anything that's going to resemble what's been presented in the mockups for commercial industrial. And I think the neighbors are unaware of any additional residential on the main property for Lucy Bowler. But back to Tomahawk Construction. We moved into our home July twenty-nineteen, and the project went into construction, I believe, the spring of two thousand. Shortly thereafter, very large cranes, one of them a seventy-ton crane began using the Anderson Ave access onto Greenwood. We've thought maybe once, twice, didn't pay a lot of attention to it. Eventually, they depressed the road in the entire one thousand block and then down to the eleven-hundred block with these heavy cranes. I placed myself four or more calls to three-one-one to report the damage. On my fourth or fifth call, I finally said, I need to speak to your supervisor. What's under that crushed road are gas lines, sewer lines and water lines. And they probably are damaged, but the city did repair the road. And I'm wondering if the city was reimbursed by Tomahawk and/or their insurance company for those repairs. And what happened after that call with the supervisor three-one-one, the cranes disappeared. But they re, and that was back in probably twenty-twenty-one. They, they've been gone for maybe eighteen months, but they're back. They're on the south end of the property now. They were using the north end of the property against Union, but they couldn't go out on Union. He described, there's no way to turn off of, off of the property onto Union. So they weren't using what would have been an access point onto Bennett to get the whole squad. They were using that little roadway and they really caused significant damage and endangered the neighbors. And I did speak to a couple of people at Tomahawk and they just blew me off. And it's, it's a lot of equipment every day. It wasn't, you know, once a week. There were heavy cranes driving on this road. I called Tomahawk and used the number on their website.
Sir, I hate to interrupt, but, but I do want to try to just bring you back to what we're here to discuss. I understand you're frustrated with how the site's been used. And, you know, there may, there may certainly be some issues with how it's been used over the last couple of years. But what the applicant's asking for is to abandon a right-of-way that's on the property. And I'm curious if you have any specific concerns with the applicant's request for right-of-way abandonment? Or if all of your concerns are just in regards to the development activities and, and those sorts of things that have been taking place on the property since they acquired it?
Yes, my concern is the two access points to the property. One, they're abandoning the access point off of Union. Our neighbors thought that as a commercial industrial, people would come off of Holt's Claw and enter on Union or enter on Bennett. And now what the applicant is saying is they're going to abandon the Union Street access point by abandoning the right-of-way. And that's going to put more traffic on the little street, it's called Anderson. I walk my dog on it all the time. And I don't know, you know, what is the final use of the property? What, what are they going to build in terms of commercial, industrial, residential? And what are the number of cars that are going to enter and exit on a daily basis? And if it, if it does have restaurants, potentially that traffic's going to be there at night as well. So I do, do have a problem with the right-of-way being abandoned because they're going to go to the two exits and entrances to the property.
Thank you.
Open for questions. I mean, I don't have a whole lot of response to him. I don't think it's smart to have the new entrance that close to Holt's Claw. I think it's going to create a small city block of a hundred and sixty feet wide. It's, it's really going to exaggerate the length of that. If you look, you can see that the whole top of that page is going to be a one city block now. It's going to be a super long, skinny block. And it's, it's not the standard of making a new block. It's not the standard to have an exit that close to Holt's Claw. It's not the standard to have an exit that close to the railroad. I feel like that intersection is going to be a problem. And, and on the other side, it jogs down and goes further away. And we're improving that old right-of-way on, that was going down to Bennett. We're making that much better. And the geotechnical engineer doesn't think that a road should be right there next to that grade change, that basically a cliff that goes up fifteen to twenty, fifteen feet on that side, there's rock in there. It's just not a smart place to put a road, in my opinion, as the engineer.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brady, are you, are you familiar with the City of Chattanooga's new Parks Not Door Master Plan? Do you know about the, the pedestrian, crosstown pedestrian piece of infrastructure that was planned for? And sort of also part of the marketing material for the site?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't seem like it's really taken into account, site plan. But I, I think what I'm wondering is specifically, i- if I look to the other side of the site, I don't see really a material difference between the, the way that then the, the road turns and goes, goes back out to Bennett and then the way that it would come out to Union. I don't think what we're talking about is a full city block, but maybe half where you would have a, almost more like an alley. And, and I think that, that it, it feels a little bit like, you know, it, it looks like it's working out okay on one side, but, but, but not on the other. Can you help me understand?
Yeah, yeah. If you follow that yellow line down to the end, to the right side of the page, then it hits that hat. it hits that hatch. That's where it jogs. And all that hatched area kind of, there's like that purple outline there, all that hatch area is part of that sheer cliff. So everything's got to go to the north of that. And then I've got a dimension on there from Holt's Claw down to where the middle of that driveway would be on that plan, if you can see that, that's the 160 feet. So all that dark hatched area is where we couldn't put the road and kind of around where the green line is for the pedestrian access, that would be one side of the road. That's how far it would jog for that, for that south side of the yellow, it's going to jog all the way up there where that green line is. So that's the jog that we're creating, you know, removing 50 feet, I guess further north than we are on the south side of the property. That's the jog.
I, I think that sort of echoed the sentiments of the gentleman from the neighborhood that it feels like this is a moving target and it feels unclear as to what the public is, is going to get by giving up th- this piece of property.
Yeah, I guess the property.
But I want to jump in. It's, I think it's the owner's property, the applicant represents the owner, it's the owner's property on every front of the right away. So the public doesn't currently, I mean, there is no right away there today and the public doesn't have any benefit or anything to gain from the right away in its current condition.
That's right.
And, and the applicant has the property on either side of it. So I, I look at this.
Well, I think on the one side, I'll admit that there are neighbors that border, they're not here. I'm not sure if, I don't think this gentleman is one of the, there's one lady that owns the property page down that is adjacent to it, but she can't use the property, she can't use the road because there's a cliff between the road. So the road is going to be adjacent to her property, but she can't get to her property from the road. That's why I'm saying it's only serves this property owner, like you're saying.
Exactly right. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Anderson.
Y'all, we're going to have to vote on this.
You don't have to accuse yourself because your last name is.
I only, the street down the road was named for me.
Okay.
But 100 years ago, we're going to have to vote on this one way or another. So I'm going to move to approve and we'll see where everybody is.
All right, we have a motion to approve. And it has been seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Brown, motion carries. All right, 25, you're asking for a deferral?
No, no, sir.
Our staff is recommending a deferral.
Staff was recommending to defer depending on what happened on these, of this case we just discussed. 25 and 26 are related to the same condition and that condition's on the screen. Subject to the owner, developer's dedication of a new right away and instruction of a public street network meeting the intent of attached providing north, south connectivity from Bennett Avenue to Union Avenue, connectivity to South Reunion Avenue via Anderson Avenue. These were two other streets that got abandoned subject to that right away we just discussed being put in. They've already been, they've already, it's already happened. Somebody's the plant got approved and got recorded, those rights ways are gone now. That condition, these conditions are still valid on those two cases, they need to be lifted.
All right.
Since the planning.
We need a motion to lift.
I moved to lift conditions. Chairman on 137.
It's just condition number two, right?
Correct.
We have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and on 26, 2023 dash zero one three eight. What is this, Brian? Same condition?
Same, same condition.
Okay.
Chairman, move to lift the condition in red.
We have a motion to lift condition number two and it has been seconded in the discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Case 27, I was the applicant and I asked for it to be deferred.
Second.
Yes, 30 days.
Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded in the discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a resolution to amend the Hamilton County zoning regulations to amend short-term vacation rental.
Brian, yes, a simple amendment. If you look on the screen, everything in black is the current definition of, actually everything on the screen is the current definition of short-term vacation rental. We're proposing to remove the area in red where it says there, where a permanent residence is not established, mailing address, vehicle registration, et cetera, or talking to building inspections, that causes confusion. We like to strike that from the definition of a short-term vacation in the county. Everything else stays the same, just remove the struck, uh, struck through language. We have to strike the language, chairman.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm striking staff updates from our agenda. Any public comment?
I've got one, I got one quick staff update.
Okay.
Uh, she's not here. Most of y'all know Cassie, she is leaving us as of September eighth, going to Savannah, Georgia to be a planner. See, Savannah, we're surely going to miss Cassie. She's done a good, excellent job for us and she's been here two years, be two years in November. She'll be hard person in place.
Mike Price might be interested in the job.
He's got a lot of good ideas.
Yeah.
Um, we have one other item.
I think that could be part of that.
Did you have something on staff updates? We do have a time on the agenda for public comment on non-agenda items. Are there any?
We have two, I think the lady in the front and in the back, back here, they want to talk about a proposed amendment to Form Based Code. I got it on the screen for them. Whoever wants to go first, I guess.
My name is Rhonda Sandberg. I live at 5913 Mountain Pass Drive. I'd like to address this to Mayor Womp, Mayor Kelly, the city council and this commission. Other than today, your meetings all begin with prayer to God for guidance, yet your plans and policies mirror the atheistic dictates of the United Nations. This is evidenced by the leadership's constant use of the buzzwords sustainable development and sustainability, directly referencing the UN's 17 sustainable development goals. These are wolves in sheep's clothing, or as Jesus said in Matthew 2327, "They are whited sepulchers, appearing beautiful outwardly, but within are dead man's bones." Aligning your decisions with this travesty creates danger for all concerned. Proverbs 29 two says, "When the righteous rule, the people rejoice; when the wicked rule, the people mourn." But there is still time to stop this runaway train and turn it around. Second Chronicle seven 14 says, "If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, forgive their sins and heal their land. He who has ears to hear, let him hear. Amen."
On non-agenda items.
We do have one that's coming up now.
Good evening, good afternoon, good evening. I know it's been a long day. We've been following you on YouTube. Thank you for broadcasting that. Thank you for your service. I know the, the pay is, is not good, but thank you for, for doing what you do. My name is Matt Phillips. I'm with Rise Partners and representing the applicant RV Market LLC. We submitted a, a request to RPA to create a new zone within Form Based Code DCX 20 that doesn't currently exist today. Briefly, you know, Chattanooga is, Chattanooga's downtown is the epicenter of our civic cultural, cultural and entertainment and, and business activities for our entire region. And we think it's really, really important that we work together to ensure for generations that that's the case. We, RV Market LLC acquired a site in between Broad Street, Market Street, 10th and 11th, the old civic forum site. And with the intention of developing a class A office building that meets the demands of, of a post-COVID workplace. And currently are at the Form Based Code, it tops out at a CX 12 zoning, which means 12 stories. There's numerous buildings, as you all know, downtown that, that either exceed or come close to the 20-story zoning. There's also a BCX 20 zoning in Form Based Code and a, an area town adjacent to downtown. So based off this, we, we asked for the creation and adoption of a new DCX 20 zone. I'll defer to, to Brian and Dan a little bit on the process, but I'm also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
As part of the process to amend the existing Form Based Code, applicants are required to come to planning commission for planning commission, you know, to take no action or direct staff to draft an amendment to the Form Based Code. And that's why they're here tonight.
So one or two things needs to happen. Either we take no action or we give direction to staff to draft an amendment, which would be for a new zone up to 20 stories.
Basically the DCX downtown context add a 20-story high maximum with a 300 foot distance as well as eventually they'll come back to rezone the property.
Right.
So council could direct us to change it too, but at this case, we're, I mean, we're seeking planning commission to do what we are in support of going forward with this change.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I can speak for myself on council, but as planning zoning chairman, I think we would love to see planning commission tackle this first. We would strongly suggest that the questions, the wisdom from this body be, be forwarded to, to us before we were to make any decision. So on that note, Matt, I would, you said adjacent properties, because I know we have a large story building at the bend that we can do. And I, and I forget which that, how many stories that was.
The bend, the bend was afforded, it was really a, a district that was curated for that project, BCX.
Oh, yeah.
20. So there's, they can go 20 stories at the bend, adjacent to downtown.
Are you asking for kind of, let's just copy and paste?
We, we, we think it's, we think it's really important that, that central city areas afforded the same rights to go 20 stories. So, and that would include, that would include our site. Yes, sir.
Okay. That, that were exactly what I was trying to get to. Sorry.
The, the.
It's been a long day, so my words are.
But chairman, there's a, there's a picture on the screen of the existing buildings downtown that have, show you some examples, stories that they've.
You'd like to bring a 20-story into Form Based Code, kind of like.
Down in our central.
Bring it in.
Yes, sir. Our central city. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
I have 19 questions. I'll make the motion, Matt, I'll make the motion. This should not be taken as an indication that the administration will blindly support whatever that ordinance looks like at the end. So we need to have some conversations about it, but I'll, I'll move to ask staff to draft that ordinance and I'm sure I'll be working with you on that. And this one.
We, we have a motion, it has been seconded. I guess my only concern is that, you know, when we did Form Based Code to begin with, which looked a lot like this in terms of just the length of meeting, there was all this opportunity for public comment as those zones were being addressed. How, how will staff engage downtown property owners on that sort of zoning code becoming available?
We've discussed this briefly because this is a text amendment. We don't notify adjacent property owners. We could put a sign up.
Yeah, you wouldn't even, what, what adjacent property owner is there? There's not.
Until the zoning comes in, they would have to put up a zoning application sign. We could have that to put up public planning notices that we're creating a new zone. Without this amendment, the only way to get 20 stories is to have to rezone to C3 with all kinds of conditions with that, which I don't think nobody wants to do the C3. So yes, we, and amendments are put on our website.
Okay. Okay. That's great. Did you make your motion?
I did, and I think people will hear about it.
In a second, was there a second? And is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I need approval in the minutes of July 10th, 2023. We have a motion that has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We have a motion to adjourn.